Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the village board meeting of April 11. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Thomas.
Trustee Purcell, trustee Baloo, trustee Willis, trustee Harris Jones, trustee Hyferman, trustee Roman, president Holfeld.
Here. Representing staff this evening, to my left, our village manager Napoleon Haney, to my right, our village attorney Chris Cummings. To the audience is right, our police chief Denise McGrath, fire chief Bob Grabowski, finance director Dennis Bubinak, community and economic development director Angela Messeres, public works director John Schaper, and assistant village manager Tyler Hall. And in the audience is our assistant finance director Amy Zakowski. The minutes of March 28th, any additions or corrections? Trustee Baloo? Trustee Willis? Trustee Hyferman?
Hi, Mr.
They have a motion to approve the minutes, please.
So.
It's been moved by trustee Willis, seconded by trustee Hyferman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Baloo, trustee Willis, trustee Hyferman, president Holfeld.
Hi. The claims list and the amount of $775,230.46. Comments or questions? Trustee Baloo, trustee Willis, trustee Hyferman.
Please have been answered.
May I have a motion to approve the claims list, please?
So.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Hyferman, seconded by trustee Willis. Roll call, please.
Trustee Baloo, trustee Willis, trustee Hyferman, president Holfeld.
Hi. Of that $775,000 claims list, three items comprise the majority of that. Our payments to Chicago Heights for water was $259,000. One month's employees' health insurance was $240,000. And our payment to Thorn Creek Sanitary District was $77,000. That amounted to $576,000 or 74% of the claims list. Hear from the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board on any subject not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Yes, sir. Please come on.
I am worried.
Come on up. Go right ahead, sir.
Tonight, I'd like to talk about a recent report by the United States Secret Service, probably best known as being the people who guard the President of the United States. They did a special report on mass shootings. And no longer are mass shootings just a matter for the tabloids and the sensational reporters. But it's also beginning to worry the United States government, as well it should, since we are an outlier when it comes to the sheer number and deadliness of our mass shootings. And I don't want to have to remind people that recent weeks have been full of them. Here are two, here are the two most interesting findings of the United States Secret Service report. Number one, 72% of these shooters experienced a major financial stressor. That's what the report calls them, a major financial setback in the previous time, just before they began shooting. And 100%, that's every one of them, had family stressors, that is deaths, emotional upsets, divorces, all kinds of family stressors. Those were the two big items jumping out of the report producing mass shootings. I want to stress that in the mass media and in our politicians' empty words about prayer and so on, every one of these shooters is dealt with as an individual, as if something peculiar about him or her life explains what they did. What are never dealt with are the social conditions that produce so many, the pressures on the job, in the home, and those pressures are not intrinsic. That's why no other country has the level of mass shootings we do, not even close. And you know something? The pressure on our families, the pressures on us at work are extreme, and they have become more so. The inflation jacks up the pressure to keep up, which of course we can't. Yes, you might do something about mass shooters if you stop blaming the individual for the event and started looking at how this society could be changed. Giving workers higher wages, more time off, a different way of living, the work-life balance might be a better way to deal with these mass shootings than the way we've been using, since the increase in them suggests that the way we've been dealing with it is a big fat failure. Next, California established a commission, and the commission was to look into the conditions of workers in the fast food industry, exactly to look into the conditions which the United States Secret Service says are part of why shooters shoot. But now the fast food companies got together and shipped in to fund a referendum about all of this that will at least postpone for another year. This commission, whose number one goal was to look into what it would mean to raise the wages of fast food workers in stages to a target of $23 per hour. I want to list the companies that gave, each gave over a million dollars to get this referendum passed, to stall off paying fast food workers a decent wage. Here are the ones that contributed a million: Chipotle, Starbucks, Chick-fil-A, McDonald's, In-N-Out Burger, and Kentucky Fried Chicken. Please keep in mind that when you buy from any of them, a part of the money you turn over is used to persuade you to support a referendum that postpones a decent wage for workers, just like you. You're funding because, believe me, the million that they contribute, they're going to raise their prices to get that million back from the very people they squeeze. I wouldn't be surprised if these companies spend more to block all of these efforts than it could cost them not to do it and just pay the workers what you should have been paying them all along. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Thomas, the under the vote, please.
The board is asked to approve the reappointment of Philip Mason to the Economic Development Committee to serve a term through April 11, 2025. The board is asked to authorize village manager Haney to enter into agreements with two companies, American Lawn LLC of South Allen and Utermark &amp; Sons of Homewood for grass cutting, nuisance vegetation trimming, and debris removal services for privately owned, noncompliant properties during the 2023 calendar year. Board is asked to award a bid for 2023 motor fuel tax funds for general maintenance pavement patching program to M&amp;J Asphalt Paving Company of Cicero in an amount not to exceed $248,950. The board is asked to pass resolution R. 3142, authorizing the release of a $20,000 mortgage in favor of the village to facilitate the sale and redevelopment of the vacant commercial property at 1-802-718-029 Dixie Highway, formerly Vice District Brewing.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience regarding these items? Not? Trustee Baloo? Comments or questions? Trustee Willis?
No.
Trustee Hyferman? They have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please.
So who?
Second.
Then moved by trustee Hyferman, seconded by trustee Willis. Roll call, please.
Trustee Baloo, trustee Willis, trustee Hyferman, president Holfeld.
Hi. Item number nine, new business. Mr. Bubinak. The draft budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
As I present my 24th and final budget, I'd like to start by taking time to recognize what I think makes wholly different. That would be teamwork. We're a small, non-home rule community with limited staff and elected positions, but we are able to accomplish quite a bit during these last couple of decades based on everybody pitching together and working as a team towards a common goal. Of course, every team needs a leader, and that leader can come from a variety of positions depending on the project. We have many people here who will volunteer to lead. To the draft 2324 budget, a team undertaking as always. I'll go through the memo and highlight a few things in the memo that's on the screen and on your TV screen as well. Instead of 24 times, I'd say it the next 24 years if I was staying. The most important planning document we prepare and discuss each year is the budget. It shows what we plan to accomplish the coming year with respect to the municipal services that a municipal government provides. There will always be a greater demand for these local government services than we have revenues to pay for those services. But through the budget discussions, we balance what services we can provide with the revenues we have to pay for that service level. Did you know property tax revenue represents only 12% of those general fund services? A lot of folks get their property tax bill and they think we get the whole thing, but we only get, we only get, we use 12% of it or percent of the tax bill, I think, is right around 11% right now. And did you know that local government provided services of police, fire, and public works account for 66% of the expenses in our yearly budget? So that's really where we spend our money. We have a new revenue source. It's probably going to one of those three sources, police, fire, public works. As far as the process, the finance department is busy every month, tracking revenue, and we have decades of history in which we use for trend analysis. Using current data and historical trend data, the finance department presents a reasonable revenue budget which reflects the resources for the services we look to provide in the coming year. But things can change without much notice. And the 2324 budget was one of those. As we had put together kind of our initial projection with about a million dollars more of revenue than expenses. But we hadn't gotten notice that Walmart would be closing its Homewood store. So back to the drawing board, we'll probably be discussing things quite a bit different tonight than what we will be discussing, which is basically a status quo budget. But those things happened. And, you know, it was a Kmart at one time. It became a Walmart. It was a racetrack at one time that became a Kmart. So somewhere down the line, there'll be, there'll be somebody that replaces Walmart. But it did change this budget quite a bit. Like I said, it's basically a status quo budget. Same people, same programs as last year. Fund balance is something that we have accumulated recently, but we've also drawn down on a number of times, if you remember, the housing, the effect on the housing crash in our economy. And also, I think people forget the attacks on 9/11 actually brought the economy down too. So those are examples of where we drew our fund balance down. It had recently in the COVID budget, which we thought was going to do the exact opposite thing, but it seemed people were very busy. We did do well with sales tax and state shared income tax. So fund balance goes up, fund balance goes down, but it is our cushion that we'll use in the future to keep our service levels constant. Meetings, we had meetings with all the departments. We reviewed their spending. Recommendations were made. The village manager, assistant village manager, assistant finance director, and myself come up with a recommendation, which is in front of you tonight. The outcome is a balanced budget where revenues anticipated to be available coming year are sufficient to cover requests for projects we want to complete and a few dollars left over to add to fund balance. Our budget fund summary is $38,867,675, of which most of the discussion goes into the general fund because it's kind of what local government is. Police, Fire, Public Works, $26,090,166, but we do have some comments later on funds such as MFT Water Capital Project, TIF debt service. Into the highlight parts of our budget team of Amy, Napoleon, and Tyler put together a nice, nice highlights of the budgets. I'm just going to kind of run through those pages. Our first page is our revenues in the general fund. And those revenues in the pie chart actually are quite diverse. It looks like it's all taxes, and we'll see on the next page that those taxes are made up of a number of different taxes. We are lucky that we have fairly diversified revenue stream. Be it ambulance fees, cell tower rental, video gaming revenue, parking and compliance through the court system, building permits, employees' health insurance contributions, or interest income are items that we use to provide those services that we need to provide each year. That would be page 37. On page 38, we have kind of a nice group, a nice chart that the group put together, and it kind of shows 29% is sales tax. So we're obviously going to put our efforts there as that's our number one revenue source to provide the services we provide. Again, I think fairly diversified revenue sources. We are using more property taxes towards pensions, but we have property tax towards operations at 12%. The state shared income tax is very important at 16%. And then we started to get down to the places for eating tax, a relatively new revenue source, and other utility taxes. So again, very kind of diversified revenues here at the Village of Homewood, not dependent on simply on property taxes. There is a bar chart there, and you'll see sales tax go down, but again, we talked about losing the Walmart, which forced us to look at our original projections of sales tax, our largest source, and we adjusted that down. We'll see what replaces Walmart, but that's going to take some time. We are continuously looking for opportunities to increase sales tax because it is our number one revenue source. And you may have shot that some of our new sources, which would be Bed Bath &amp; Body Works, Burlington, and DTLR. We're going to need to monitor the coming year how sales tax is performing with Walmart leaving, and is there any spillover? So next year's budget could be a totally different story. How the Walmart thing wasn't that big a deal, or oh, wow, it's a bigger deal than we even thought. So we'll find out what happens next year. Smaller on the grass is cannabis and local gasoline tax, but those were allowed by the state about three years ago to local governments such as the Village of Homewood. Cannabis trending down is more locations open up for places for folks to go than just Homewood. And the gasoline, Walmart actually still credit for the gas, that gas tax, we were allowed that 3 cents per gallon. So again, we'll see what replaces that Walmart gas ditch, maybe another one, and then we'll be back where we were. Places for eating tax then was a, we put that in in 2014. I think that was right after the housing crash and how that was affecting our budget, and it's performed quite well. We have 1,800,000 projected for the coming year. State shared income certainly has helped us these last few years. The state does share some of their income tax with local governments, and that's a very important source that allows us to run a police department and a fire department. While the streets are their public works department. Fees. We're always looking for new fees. I'm not a real expert at this ambulance fee, but I do remember when that was zero. And so now we're up to like a million and a half dollars ambulance fee collections, but it's a new program through the federal government and the state government where Medicaid reimbursements for ambulance provided services, but a portion of that revenue, 50%, will have to go back to the state. Property taxes as a non-home rule community in December, you always hear me say, we have, so we have to allocate between pensions and day-to-day operations. Right now, we see a majority of our property taxes going towards pensions, about 70%, I think is the latest number. Interest income, if you look at your budget documents, there's a crazy high percentage there, but that's because a year ago, interest rates were at about zero. Now they're a little bit under five. So we've actually reflected that with more interest income. So last year, we were making nothing, and this year, we're making a market rate. Event revenue, new people in the events department have been assigned the responsibility to get more sponsors for events. The casino is out there in the future, and I believe the casino will help the Village of Homewood. But time will tell on what that generates and what that's going to, that's going to help us out with our operations. Didn't want to mention, though, I skipped over property taxes. We are concerned about recent property tax assessments being shifted to the commercial sector. So I think Ray Robertson, our former trustee, said it best, the tax burden shifts to the residents in that case, and then the residents start to move out. So we want to stay on top of assessments. Here in Cook County, we're so close to the state of Indiana, to Will County, that there's opportunities for the commercial sector to move not very far from here, have a much better tax situation. So the assessor and how they're assessing this area does affect us quite a bit. So we want to stay on top of that on the future assessments. Page 40, then where do we spend our money, police, fire, and public works? That money is spent in salaries and group, excuse me, group insurance. Those are two dominant categories. Salaries, most of the staff here is unionized, so that's negotiated through the union agreements and set in those agreements. And the insurance then is based on our claim experience. We are in a large health insurance school, which has saved us a tremendous amount of money over the years versus trying to go on our own. But any controls that we can find to put in place will assist future budgets. The manager's office has a decrease of 16%, rather a large decrease, with they have basically whole new staff this year versus what they had a year ago. That new staff then will be heading in a new direction with the manager's office and was reset kind of that particular department. That's why I see a very large decrease along with the end of a contract that we had. So that assisted in that 16% information technology is down. This couple of leases came to an end. Economic development is down 6%, mostly because zoning ordinance revision project has come to an end. Some of those funds have reallocated to new business recruitment. Again, we're always looking for new sales tax generators for new businesses at the Village of Homewood because sales taxes are number one revenue source. Finance department, the good news and the bad news. The good news is in 2000, the finance department was staffed with 7.75 full-time equivalents, and today is at 5.5 full-time equivalents, a much more efficient staff doing things differently, and great employees in the finance department. That's how we're able to do. But that's the good news. The bad news is we've always held the village's total risk management insurance and risk management. When you hear that, it's mostly workers' compensation. So the last three years have not been good. If it's one year, you don't really get too worked up, two years. But after three, there's a bad trend here. So I'm leaving you. Where you're going to be trying to spend some time and figure out how to turn that trend around. I got a couple of ideas. I'll leave you before I, before I go. I don't know if they're working on it. Napoleon's big on a few ideas too, but we got to turn that around. But we do reflect in the finance department a rather large increase, $254,000 really, for these three years of bad workers' compensation experience. Page 41. Public Works. Okay, well, John's got kind of beat up here, but it's actually the finance department that should be beat up. We had asked John to change some of the payroll allocations of his people. And so you got some crazy looking percentages here. We got away from maybe a person was 5% here, 10% there, 20% there. And we've kind of gone to more of a 50/50 or 25/75 to reflect where the folks are working. And so in general, the public works department is up 5%. Any line items that are up are really gasoline to reflect the increasing cost of gas, and some of the energy costs are up. But in general, the public works department, it's very status quo. This year, although some of those percentage increases in your budget might make you think there's some big increases there. Fire department, I give them credit. They held on to the part-time firefighter program as long as any community. But it's really not 1963 anymore. Folks are busy at home, and they're less likely to volunteer. It's really come to an end in our part-time fighter, fighter program. Like I said, they hung on as long as possible here at Homewood, but it's just change countrywide and right here at Homewood that people just aren't really going to volunteer their time like they might have 60 years ago. And there was probably volunteer fire departments all around us. The fire department is up actually 3% when you factor out the 400,000 that we have to pay at the state for that increased ambulance revenue that we were talking about earlier. Police department is the largest department and probably 99% of local governments. Our police department is up 1%. There's been turnover and there's been changes. I think the biggest challenge for the police department, and it's not just here, but again, across the country, is to recruit and find and retain officers. So that's been a real challenge across the country. So our largest departments are actually quite status quo this year. Water and sewer fund went to Chicago Heights recently, so we're starting to see the benefit of that. Hammond's water costs are much more predictable than what we've seen over the decades from Chicago. So we have more control of that cost. But we did spend a lot of money to go to Hammond, Chicago Heights, and we've got to rebuild that money in our capital projects fund because we have other projects that we need to not just go to Hammond, but we need water tower, we need some other things. So we're trying to build that back up. Border Fuel of the state recently during the COVID-type years did allocate more dollars to local government. That's kind of come to an end. The last grant dollars came last year. So we have lots more projects that we have money to do. So I think in the long term, we want to look at any borrowing needs, whether that be through a referendum, through a non-home rule sales tax designated for capital projects. We do have more streets and more equipment, et cetera, and we actually have money to pay for those particular projects. If funds TIFs are successful, when the growth in equalized assessed value exceeds the frozen amount, they do take 23 years to see this happen. So that's what the long life of the TIF. And we will spend the money then on economic development projects and infrastructure within the TIF area. So it's a way to, to turn around underperforming areas of the community. The debt service, we were very fortunate. In 2020, we issued debt below 1%. I don't think that's going to happen in our next debt issue, which we project for 2024. But right now, we about have 500,000 on the books. It's December 1st. When we make our last payment, we will have zero. But again, there is a, another issue planned for early 2024. Again, there's infrastructure needs well and above. What that, that limited bond will get, that limited bond is about 2 million, and we have 812 above that. So again, want to talk about some future borrowing maybe, or possibly a non-home rule sales tax for capital projects. ARPA, federal government share dollars with, with local governments, county governments, and state governments. And our share was about 2.5 million. We have a list in the budget document where we plan to spend that. And that's going to be on capital projects and equipment. Things such as an ambulance, sidewalk replacement, vehicle replacement are what we're looking to spend that federal money on. So all capital, no salaries, just all capital projects, capital equipment. That does have to be completed by 2026. So we want to get all those projects done by 2026 to comply with the federal government's rule on the spending of ARPA money. Fund balance, again, we've had housing crash of '09, terrorist attacks of 9/11. Those really did drive the economy down. When the economy goes down, sales tax in particular goes down with it. So we do want to have that fund balance for the next coming recession, which we know eventually there'll be one. So that'll keep our service levels constant throughout these recessionary years. So that'll keep our service levels constant throughout these recessionary years while we try to feel warmer or do whatever we're going to do down there, wait to see what the casino might bring for us. I do believe that's my last comment on the budgets you do have. I will go through page by page on that. But of course, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer it. Do you have all the departments here tonight? If I can't answer, and I'm sure one of them would be capable to answer it.
Mr. Bobanek, this is your last budget. You'll be retiring when?
I mean, I do.
And we'll miss you.
Thank you.
It's an excellent budget and all I can do is compliment the staff as you have done. Budgets like this aren't put together easily and the unknowns, as you said, are out there. So my compliments to you, my compliments to staff. Thank you all. Amy Zakowski, who is sitting there taking copious notes. Big shoes to fill, but again, we'll do fine. Comments or questions from the audience, John? Whatever you're comfortable.
We'll start at the top, public engagement. I guess I'm the only public here today. Which is somewhat disappointing. I mean, we put out, you put out every Friday afternoon, what's going on in the village? And there could have been something in there, hey, we're presenting our budget. You want to come in and see what we're talking about? Outreach to engage the public to support the things you want to do. I talked to the fire chief about, you know, the no part-time. I mean, my kids were fire cadets. It was a great program. We had a nice conversation about, you know, why it's not there now. So anyway, it is more interesting. I'm retired with the government finance officers association. And yesterday in the mail came this wonderful government finance review. And formula for budget success. How finance officers can unlock potential of budgeting by mixing in public engagement. If you want us to be on your side on things. We need to talk more than the me that spends time looking into what you're doing. Nevertheless, nevertheless. Fun balance, general fund unassigned. Going back to 2013 to 3.7 million. Now we're at 10.8 million. Last two years went from 5 million to 7 million to 10.8 million. I looked at what the variances were. You did better on revenue, you held down expenses, you go up. What are you going to do with it? I had some ideas what you can do with it. Utility taxes. There's a concept called fiscal illusion, where Joe, the taxpayer has no idea what's going on in the, in the black box. Utility taxes, telecommunications, natural gas, electricity, those are set by the village. They can be reduced. Best example, natural gas. We get taxed through utility company for the total amount of what our gas bill is. There's terms and there's price. If people were paying attention to past couple of winters, the price of natural gas went up a whole lot. And they were probably using the same number of terms. Many other municipalities base it on terms like three cents per term. So instead of me paying $9, I'm only paying $5. It's a regressive kind of tax that could benefit some people in general. Between those three utility taxes, you probably pull in, wild guess, a million, million 200,000. Those could be reduced somewhat and you can edge off some of the fund balance. You could take some of that fund balance and really put it into your capital projects that you're looking to build a fund balance to do things for. Nevertheless. You have a budget policy, a revenue policy and expenditure policy. They're all well stated, but where you're sitting with fund balance, your policy says four months, 33%. Yours 50%. And you're actually going to go up 22,000 for the next year. We, yeah. Someday, somebody is going to file a property tax objection against your property tax because you had the money. Nevertheless, so we'll get to the final. The ARPA funds, the money that came, the $2.5 million. You have a project list in the budget. Some of those things are just almost normal operating kinds of expenditures rather than big ticket kinds of things. The Illinois municipality tried to interpret what treasury said you could spend that money on. And one of the biggest things is water projects, lead, lead abatement in, in service lines, things like that. But we're buying turnout equipment for the fire department. They deserve it. They have it, but spending the money that's sitting there for that and bigger long-term capital investments is probably the best idea. And when all over the place, utility taxes, not good. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, John. You and I had numerous discussions.
And my first thing I was going to say, if somebody offered me a Dairy Queen ice cream cone, I'd sit in the back and not say anything. You didn't do it.
We're always happy to hear you. Mr. Bobanek, any comments?
There's probably 100 ways to do a budget. 100 different priorities. So again, through the past couple of decades under our home rule status, we are kind of dependent on some of the things that we can leave on the context on. But I don't think there's anything unreasonable. Certainly capital projects that need to be done. We came up with a real nice list and kind of a plan for capital projects. But again, you know, you lose somebody like Walmart, you kind of want to take a break. You know, see what's going on in a year from now. Nice thing about budget process, the year from now, you get to look at it again. So you can say, like I said, hey, Walmart wasn't that big of a deal or oh, Walmart was a big deal. We've got to use some of that fund balance that we built up during the COVID years because that's, that's the history, you know, when you build it up, you use it down. As a non-home rule community is much more difficult to build it up. Than the home rulers have, you know, they've just got more access to revenue than we do. So and we use that revenue again, police, fire, public works, where we spend it.
And fund balances, we have to be careful. Comments from the board, trustee below.
I appreciate all the work that went into it. I also appreciate going over it with me and answering my questions and I speak about it.
Thank you for all the presentations. This one, the review that we got last week was really effective for me, really informative. And again, thank you for this 15 years at least of explaining it to me.
And we will miss you. So thank you all.
Again, like I said, what makes home more different? Teamwork.
Thank you, Ken. Go aboard discussion, trustee below. Just do Willis.
I was happy to hear about the ITUP Grant Award and I'm looking forward to us being able to use it to help make 183rd Street safer.
I just have one announcement. We were once again recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation. Homewood is again named a Tree City USA accolades to our tree committee and also public works. Please convey that on to Brian Dorr and the landscape and maintenance team. Outstanding. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn, please? Then moved by trustee Willis, seconded by trustee Hyperman, roll call please.
Trustee Baloo, trustee Willis.
Hi.
Trustee Hyperman.
President Hopeful.
Hi, thank you all.